Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. 6:33. Roll call, please.
Lockshin. Here. Michaels. Pugh. Rodriguez. Rogers. Sexton. Smith.
Here.
Store. Straub. Yes. Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vannich Theranat.
Here.
Wilson. Carter.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Greer.
Here.
Hanauer Friedman. Locke.
Can I get a motion for approval of amendments, for the approval of the minutes, January 9, 2024? Or, I'll skip that. Sorry about that. Can I get approval for the agenda? Straub. Second. Lockshin. Okay. Approval of the minutes. All. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Can I get approval of the minutes, or a motion for approval of the minutes? Okay.
Second, Straub.
Thank you. Do we have any public participation? Okay. Any discussion? I'm gonna get it, child. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Any public participation? Is there any communication amongst the board members? Ms. Beth?
Yeah. I would just like to encourage people to voice their opinion on the proposed post office consolidation and moving to Chicago. There is an article in News Gazette about it with a link to a SurveyMonkey link that you can make your voice heard about it, especially with the News Gazette going from direct delivery to mail delivery. You're looking at several day delay in getting your daily paper, which is kind of pointless at that point. So, you know, never mind other things, like, you know, mailing a birthday card to your kid across town is gonna be a week. So, I would really strongly encourage everybody who can to let them know in no uncertain terms how bad of an idea this is.
Thank you. Any other communication? Ms. Jen, Locke.
I just wanted to inform everybody that this weekend, the IHSA Wrestling Championships will be going on. There will be 250 high schools representing 600 wrestlers, their families. There's an estimated 30,000 people coming to town for it with multiple night stays because of how the tournament works. So, our region's gonna be bringing in about $5.5 million in economic impact from it. And just, I encourage anybody that's in town this weekend, I'm not, but if you are, go watch some wrestling and watch the high school athletes put on a show.
Thank you, Jen. And I would also like to point out, the Illinois water rate increase. There, I'm kind of, I'm sorry. The proposed rate increase that is proposed for early 2025, it's 152 million rake height. And it would cost residents about $24 a month extra, and the sewer bill would be about $5 extra per month. From the article I'm reading, I see that shareholders would get a great profit of this, and infrastructure is another reason that I got from the article. But hopefully, we won't see that, and if you can voice your opinion to vote no for that. I think our constituents would be happy on our behalf that we cannot use that rate increase. Thank you. Justice in Social Services report. Ms. Leah, please.
Thank you. All right, we're starting off strong with our monthly reports. We have the Public Defender from January of 2024, has been accepted and placed on file. We have Emergency Management Agency for December of 2023 and January of 2024. Animal Control for January of 2024. The Veterans Assistance Commission 2023 Annual Report, and the January 2024 Report. Probation and Court Services, we have November and December of 2023, as well as our fourth quarter statistics. Those are all available on each department's webpage. Next, we have the Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report, which, as usual, is information only. But we talked about this last month, about getting a different format, and that is what this is. And I know at least a lot of people in my caucus really liked it. I don't know, Jennifer, if you want to say anything about it, or if anybody has any questions or feedback, because we're kind of looking at doing, you know, like we talked about, a different style of report, if there's any information that we would rather be seeing. Diane?
I was just gonna jump in and say that this is kind of the prototype, and that's why it was a little late. We were trying to figure out exactly how to make it best suited to the board. I know there had been issues, or questions about veteran participation currently. There are no veterans involved in the program, but that will be something that is added going forward. But right now, just know the number is zero. I do want to highlight that there are 20 client contacts in the month of January, and this was a program that was rebuilt from the dust, starting in October, November. So, it's, the relationships with DOC have been reestablished. And you can see that services are ranging from housing and employment, education, all across. If anybody does have any feedback to something else that they would like to add, feel free to contact me, or obviously Leah, who is Chair of the Justice Committee. And we'll make sure that it goes in the packet next month, not a late addition.
Diane?
I was just gonna say, I think it's important that we get this, and I'm glad we're seeing it here. I think we have a lot of funds that do go into this program. And for seven clients, or whatever, I understand they're reorganizing it, or whatever they're doing. But I think we definitely need to be looking at these figures and how we can get a little more bang for our buck, to be quite honest with you.
Jenny?
I think it's, seven is new. Total is 20, like at the top, that's kind of a smaller thing. Oh, okay. I assumed that meant, like, contacts meaning they're working with them, but is that?
So, it's seven new clients this month. I'm not sure why it says contacts. I believe it's 20 ongoing clients that Jalen has at this time. But I'll double check, and we'll make sure that that's clear going forward, how many are ongoing clients. And again, just to stress, like, only one was lost to incarceration, and prevention of recidivism is the goal. And to me, that alone is a success, knowing what it costs to incarcerate even one person.
Eric?
So, if I'm reading this right, I think what I'm seeing in the, like, the demographic breakdown and link to resources and stuff is just about the new clients. Maybe it would be interesting, I don't know how much more work it'd be, to do all the current clients, and then break out the whoever's new every, you're gonna do these every quarter, every month?
I believe the goal is every month for accountability, and also so that the board is well aware and informed of what's going on. Because when we were just getting the financials, it looked like nothing was happening. And then, quite honestly, for a while, in the old regime, nothing was happening. But, so with rebuilding it, just, we can, we can do it however we want, and I've asked for it monthly, so we can tweak it, so that we show how many ongoing, how many new, and what services are being. I know that Leah had suggested, we show if one client receives multiple things, maybe we can see, you know, is it one thing for each person, or one, you know, three for these? We can, we'll tweak it. It'll probably change a little bit until everybody's happy, or until y'all cut funding, please don't.
I don't want to make it like a full-time job for someone just to make the report for us, but, you know, I think it would benefit the board and the public to hear as much as possible about it. It's, I think, an important program.
Once we figure out exactly what we want, they've assured me it won't be hard to get it. Like, tweaking it's gonna be annoying, but they report to us, they report to mental health, where they report to so many other agencies, and the data is available in some form, that they'll be able to just plug and play, once we decide exactly what we want to hear, so.
Diane?
Sorry. I appreciate what Eric just said, because honestly, as we look at this real quick, as a snapshot, the way it's, and I understand it's new. But to take back that, okay, I get these are new, but really, the public and everybody else would like to see, how many are we really helping? And so, I can really appreciate Eric's comments on that. I think that would make this report even have more teeth to it, if you will. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Beth?
So, one of the things I'm noticing is, is the age. The average, there's not anybody on here under 35. Is that because these are long-term incarcerated that are coming out? Or is it because the older folks are smart enough to take advantage of something that's there, and the younger folks have more support? Or, that would be a question I'd be interested in, if they're targeting older, or if older are just ones coming to them?
I think it's a lot of column B. I think it's the older ones are taking advantage of what's available to them, because this is not a compulsory program. It's something that we make available. You know, their probation officer, they have to report to them, you know, or, excuse me, their parole officer, they have to report to them. But we're not, we're not a requirement. And so, this is something available to help and to get them, so that they don't go back. Younger people aren't doing that, for the most part. We're not getting as many people coming out of jail, because as we've heard, that's just not how it's going. If you're in the jail, chances are, you're going to DOC at this point. So, we're getting people from DOC. And the ones that are coming out fresh and young, they're still angry. They're not, they don't want to come do this. They're ready to go live their young life, unfortunately.
So, I don't, I mean, I realize you're more on the legal side, and maybe that would help with this question. Is there a way to make it part of their parole, that they reach out to this program? Is that not actionable?
As a defense attorney, I'm gonna tell you, I oppose that.
Samantha?
I was just asking for a rough estimate about, how many clients do you think you're currently serving?
About 20.
So, was it 20 new clients? Oh, okay. I got the numbers wrong. So, right now, in total clients, that's being served at Rosecrans is 20?
By, by Ms. Meyer, within this program. Rosecrans has other programs that serve lots of other people, but with the reentry program, there's approximately 20.
Okay, thank you.
This is super exciting, and, and obviously, data that is collected, you know, in social service agencies everywhere. Looks a lot like this, as far as reporting for all kinds of funding purposes. I do case management in my day job. This is, you know, this, it'll be very exciting to see these numbers grow as the year goes on. I'm very excited about that. It's really gratifying to see the money is, is doing a thing. Some of the issues that folks are working on here, honestly, can take months. And a caseload of 20 is actually, for one case manager, pretty substantial. Like, I do not have 20 people on my caseload, and, and don't want 20 people on my caseload, especially when dealing with things like housing, if you have any kind of credit issue. Anyway, I'm very excited about this, and, and very excited about seeing it progress. And I really thank you for your work on it, Jenny.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer Locke. Moving on to our next item, we have our public defender here to give us an update from her office. Everybody, please welcome Liz Pollak.
Hi, everybody. So, first and foremost, I'm not asking anybody for any money, so everybody can relax. Basically, I just wanted to come and speak for a few minutes, to let everybody know where we're at with the Public Defender's Office, because I started this job in December of 2022, under some pretty dire circumstances. And I want to brag on my people for what a great job they're doing, and also thank all of you for supporting the office and Indigent Defense in Champaign County. So, I was gonna prepare a PowerPoint, but then I went to trial and didn't have time. So, I'm just telling you what's on my paper, but if anybody wants any of these statistics, they're readily available. I'm happy to email them, or meet with anybody who wants further details. But I really feel like Champaign is in an incredible spot right now, as compared to where we were when I started. There are public defenders offices all over the state, where they are just not taking cases, because they don't have the staff. That Adams County Chief Public Defender just quit. They lost five assistants. They haven't taken new cases since October of 2023. St. Clair County has not taken new cases since November of 2023. And that is costing their counties a significant amount of money to pay private counsel upwards of $150 an hour to handle what should be part of the Public Defender's Office. So, I'm very gratified that we are not in that group of people. I checked the website. We have zero job postings up right now, because we are full staff. It says, we have 15 people. Thank you. We do have one opening, but that opening is filled as of August 1st. So, I've made an offer to one of our interns, who is a wonderful law student at the University of Illinois. He will be joining us, and then we will be at 16 out of 16, which my understanding is, we've never had 16 attorneys in the office before. So, we're almost there. The other PD's offices, I checked the job postings today. We've got two, three, four vacancies at many of the other offices in the state. And I think that part of why we are not in that position is because we have made a lot of outreach efforts. So, I have spent time going to Chicago, speaking at law schools. We have a wonderful externship program that we're working with the University of Illinois College of Law on, and we've got 13 interns this semester. So, my hope is that by mentoring these law students, and getting the word out about what an awesome job this can be, and what a meaningful job this can be, that we will create a pipeline of new talent, that is gonna want to work in Champaign County. And I have had to reject almost a dozen people who want to work here. And so, my, I'm keeping their resumes, just in case something happens. But right now, I couldn't be prouder of the group of people that we've put together. Just really enthusiastic, caring, empathetic attorneys. I don't care what their grades were. I don't care where they went to law school. My criteria is, are you gonna come in, and are you gonna treat our clients like human beings? Are you going to empathize with the position that they are in? Are you going to communicate with them and do your job well? And every single person I've got meets that definition to a T. So, when I began this job, I was getting, on average, two to five complaints every day from clients. And I took all those calls, because I knew that we had been understaffed, and that we had a lack of communication for a lengthy period of time. We had a bunch of clients who had not been contacted by their attorneys in months. And not through the fault of the people who were working in the office, but just because the caseload was so overwhelming, there was simply not enough time for them to do their jobs adequately. I have not gotten a complaint in three months from anybody. So, I feel as though we are fulfilling our constitutional duty. We are doing what needs to be done. We have also, with the graciousness of this board, been able to modernize the office. So, when I came, we didn't have electronic files. We didn't have digital evidence files. We didn't have anything backed up on any server anywhere. We just had paper, which, to me, I hadn't used paper in 10 years, and I was like, where's all the stuff? How do I, how do I search an Adobe Acrobat? Oh, we don't have Adobe Acrobat. So, now, we have everybody with new laptops. Everybody has dual monitors. Everybody has been trained. We have an electronic file structure with digital backups of everything that we need. We've got a bunch of wonderful undergrads who help us review digital discovery, one-on-one with the evidence. And then, we also were able to purchase the Justice Text Program, which all of our felony attorneys are using on a daily basis, to transcribe video, to transcribe calls, things that we really don't have the time to do otherwise. So, I'm really happy with where we're at, in terms of a technological standpoint. Also, want to give a shout out to IT, who I always thank, because they're so awesome, and they respond to everything that we need. They've helped us set up all these new systems. We're in communication about what the needs are, and they've been incredibly responsive. So, MC and his staff are absolutely killing it. I want to give them a shout out. In addition, like I said, we are full staff, except for the one who hasn't passed the bar quite yet. We've only lost three people this year, and we've replaced them with everybody leading up to a full staff. We also have hired two mitigation specialists and a paralegal. My third secretary is replacing my paralegal. She is moving from secretary to paralegal with her certificate, so she'll begin that job on March 1st. And now, I have a total of three different languages that are spoken by staff in the office, so we can communicate better with our clients. We have five Spanish speakers. We now have a French speaker. It's, it's really just, you know, making everything so much better, and our social workers have hit the ground running. We have already started doing bio-psychosocial interviews. We have already tracked down medical records that I haven't had time to do, because I've been in court or meeting with clients. They are wonderful, young, enthusiastic. I'm really proud of them and, and what they're doing so far. Also, countywide, we have participated in the JANO replacement study. So, I've been in meetings about trying to modernize that system, and we're meeting with vendors coming up here really soon. Hopefully, we can either fix what's wrong with JANO, or look for an alternative affordable solution that's gonna make our data management, I think, up to par with where we are in the modern world, which we are not yet. And we just launched Juvenile Redeploy. So, that grant was applied for by community members. The Public Defender's Office was instrumental in creating the eligibility criteria for that program, and we had our first applicant today. So, we hope to be putting more of our juveniles, who would otherwise be bound for the Department of Juvenile Justice, on an intensive form of probation that's gonna allow them to succeed. It's gonna be in partnership with Dream, and with Cunningham Children's Home. And we are gonna be providing services that our probation services just does not have the capability to do, and we've got funding for it. So, I think that's gonna be absolutely phenomenal. I hope to see that program full by the end of this year, but it is now officially launched. So, I said, I wasn't asking you for money, and I'm not, but I do want to give you a preview of what I think this year will bring, and what my goals are. So, my goals are to continue community outreach. We represent the people of this county who don't have any other options. And by connecting with the community, with First Followers, with Dream, with other service providers, my social workers have been tasked with creating a resource bank, so that when we have clients who are struggling with homelessness, or with substance abuse problems, we will be able to connect them directly to services, which, the goal, of course, is to reduce recidivism, to help people repair the things in their lives that have brought them to the point where they are represented by a criminal defense attorney. And with that resource bank, and having people be able to make those direct connections, and when we have a lot of disparate resources in the community, they're not really all connected to each other, but we should be connected to each other. So, increasing community outreach is on the list. I had a wonderful meeting with the new grant coordinator for the county, and I told her what my goals are. I've been poking around in my spare time, looking for additional grants. One of the things I'd like to do is replace our LexisNexis, which is our legal research server. Lexis is what the county uses. Westlaw is infinitely superior. You know that. It's also more expensive, so I'm looking for grants for that, and I believe I've identified one that might be able to fund us, at least for this year. So, I'm gonna continue to work on bringing in external money into the county to help me with that. And really, you know, I want to inspire- And really, you know, I want to inspire the next generation of young attorneys to come and work for us and to do this kind of work. If they can't do it in Champaign County, they got to do it somewhere. Because this is, and I know I'm a little biased here, but it is one of the most important things that you can do in our society, is to help those who do not have the resources to pay. And there should not be a difference between what a public defender can provide and what a private attorney can provide, period. We already have the trial skills. What we need is the additional resources. We have gotten most of the way there to be able to provide those resources. There is only one thing that is going to be on my list this year that I'm going to ask you guys for in the budget process. And that is that in order to hire and retain talented, motivated people, I have paid towards the upper end of the salary range. I think I'm down to a surplus of about $27,000 left over in my personnel funds. To pay the guy I want to hire for our last position, I'll need 40. I'm hoping that AOIC grant gets renewed. And I will pay for it out of that and you guys will never have to hear from me. If that grant does not get renewed and there's a resource debt there, then I may come back and discuss that further with the board. But that is my plan, is to use the grant funds for the next fiscal year to pay for that position. And then we will be in absolutely perfect shape. So I wanted to thank all of you for supporting the office and understanding the needs of this community and helping us do what we need to do to represent people that otherwise would not have adequate representation. We're killing it. My staff is killing it. I absolutely love watching the energy and, you know, we've got a great group of people. We support each other. It's a great vibe in the office and I think we're going to be in great shape moving forward. So thank you for that support. And I hope I will not have to ask you for money in July, but if I do, you should probably give it to me. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, let's start with JJ, then Samantha, and then Chris.
So the Westlaw subscription, what are we talking about price-wise? What does something like that run?
I have to get it priced. So I haven't had a communication with a rep from Westlaw, but my understanding it's about double the cost of Lexis.
And what's Lexis costing us? 20, 30, 40?
It's in the, well, because the judiciary uses it, state uses it, and we use it. So I don't know what our portion of that is.
Gotcha. But, okay, and you answered, the state's attorney uses. So you all would be using the same thing.
I mean, if I can get a grant to pay for everybody else in the judicial system to use it, I'm sure everybody would love Westlaw. But I'm, you know, if I can't, then I'm going to look after what my people need. And so I'm going to try to get it for my people.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, and I forgot one little statistic as well. There was a couple of studies have come out this year. The ABA did a study. There's a national association studying indigent defense. They've all released reports in the last couple of years that have updated the caseload standards for public defenders. We're way over, even with a full staff, we're way over what we should be. I believe that the two different reports that were given to me that I researched, one of them said we should have 27 attorneys and one of them said we should have 25. So caseloads, the last time they did a national workload study, it was supposed to be no more than 150 felonies per year per public defender. Every single person in my office is over that, which is kind of standard. I mean, I don't know when it became like the rule that public defenders had to be understaffed, overworked, and get paid crap. But that's pretty much been traditionally what it's been for us. And even with a full staff, I'm still short substantially for what a reasonable workload would be. That being said, we're making it work and we're doing yeoman's work with what we have. So I just wanted to point that out as well, that if we had what we should have in terms of staff, we'd have 27 lawyers, 10 investigators, 10 social workers, and five support staff. As it stands, we have 16 lawyers, one investigator, two social workers, and three secretaries. Yeah, we're about half.
Samantha, I think you were next.
So I just wanted to say, of course, I got a good feedback from the constituent that I referred to talk with you. I was really blown away with the conversation that I had with her. Top concern was the lack of communication. Of course, the caseloads and not enough public defenders. So I know if my constituent was here to talk to you, she would thank you just like I'm thanking you because that's everything for inmate, to have that communication between the person that's going to be representing them. So thank you for your energy. Thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just try to always remember, that was my kid in there. What would you want them to be treated like? And that's the underlying thing for everybody on my staff. This is your family. So think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you mentioned a few things that you were kind of hoping you might be able to consider. And I was wondering, you know, homelessness or some, and is Land of Lincoln legal? Are they still active or are they?
They're active. They are active in civil cases. So they do things like divorces, orders of protection, evictions, small claims, anything that is a civil matter, and that is where we are distinct from one another. But they are still active and hiring and also doing great work.
Just no felony cases for Land of Lincoln, right?
They don't do any criminal at all. So no traffic, no misdemeanors, no nothing.
Right.
Jenny?
I just wanted to say a quick thank you. And you make me want to go to law school and get a law degree and come work for you. Like, that's such a great speech. Yes. Like, I can see where you were able to fill up all your open positions. You have a great energy that makes me want to come work there, too.
Eric?
I hate to be the kind of person that is always like giving people extra work. But something that I think would be really great, I don't know how you would find the time to do it. And I commend you on being the kind of department leader that's got everybody enthused about what they're doing. And you're doing great work for us, finding all this money. Is there a way you could share what you do with other departments here at the county? I think that, you know, I've said before, you're sort of an example. I wish you ran an airline at this point because we'd all get somewhere on time.
You know I don't really know what I'm doing, right? I mean, I just made all this up, so...
You know what you're doing. You just don't know that you know what you're doing. What you're doing is working and it's working really well. And if there was a way that we could spread that sort of style or somehow, I'd hate to say the word mentor. Maybe you could mentor some of the other department people on how to, you know, work with their staff or get people motivated to do what they're supposed to do. I've spent a long time in my career working for both bad and good and have the unfortunate circumstance of being the boss now and try to do what you do all the time. Think I do a fairly decent job, but what you do seems to really work. And I'd love to find a way where we could, you know, exemplify this for other departments, even if it wasn't in a formal way. Just, I commend you completely. So thank you very much.
No, you're welcome. And I mean, I'm always open to chat. Like, if anybody wants to talk to me, I'm willing to talk to them about why I do things the way I do them. I don't know how else to do it. I offer my advice to anybody who is curious.
Any other questions or comments for Liz?
I just want to say thank you so much again, just like everybody else. Like, just the last, since you became the public defender, it has been, I don't even want to say like a lesson, but it's been like a learning experience, I think, for all of us as to like what a department head should be and what the board interaction with that department head should be. And it has just been amazing. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, guys. And again, I really do thank you for the support because we couldn't have done any of this without you guys backing us up on everything. So thank you.
I do not have any other business. Does anybody else have other business? No. I don't have a chair's report and I don't have any items to be placed on the consent agenda. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Leah. Chris, Dr. Chris Store, we have policy, personnel, and appointments.
Thank you, Vice Chair Carter. Did I say something wrong? Okay. Huh? All right. The monthly HR report is in your packet. And we have three appointments and I'd like to do them as an omnibus. Resolution appointing Dana Cameron to the Cross Cemetery Association, term ending June 30th, 2028. Resolution appointing George Friedman to the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District Board, term ending December 31st, 2028. And resolution appointing Kyle Patterson to the Public Aid Appeals Committee, term ending November 30th, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Locke and Ms. Straub, thank you. Discussion to the motion, Ms. Michaels?
Quick question. I noticed that they don't have resolution numbers other than 2024. Is that going to be changed here pretty quick?
They don't get resolution numbers until they move forward to county board. Because if you don't pass some, then I'd have to change the numbers all around if they don't go forward.
Okay. Somehow in the back of my mind, I always thought we had numbers to all of these. Thanks.
Good catch. Mr. Smith, the appointment to the Public Aid Appeals, is that as a member? Was trying to understand the position he was being appointed for.
Yes. Mr. Sommers would like to speak to that. The previous person on this committee was the previous Champaign, City of Champaign Township Supervisor. So that's generally the folks that we have serve on these appointments. So, yeah, he's not as a county board member. This is in his new position capacity.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Oh my gosh, I did overlook, I'm sorry, I did overlook appointment of liaisons and I forgot, should have paid attention to that. We have motion to appoint Mr. Mike Smith to reentry counsel. And, yes? Oh, okay. And appointment of Jamala Rogers, who is at home nursing a bad cold, she says, to the Labor Management Health Insurance Committee. And I think that requires a motion. Ms. Locke. And then second by Mr. Farney, who got his hand up first. Thank you. All in favor, I mean, discussion. Very good, uncontested. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Now I get to do my monthly rant about appointments. And we were still looking for 20 correctional officers and a bunch of, and some IT folks for the courthouse. We're not as bad as we have had been. And I wish Ms. Pollak could kind of talk with our state's attorney because she's still looking for attorneys. But that said, we'll go on to the, let's see. Appointments for next month are, okay. Gripe's had it marked right here. For Cemetery Association, Bailey Cemetery Association Supervisor of Assessments. And I think that's the only one. And consulting my chart here, that's it. But in April, we're going to be appointing a lot of fire protection districts. And in May, Board of Review, Farmland Assessment, Water District, and Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District Republican Caucus. So that said, designation of, I don't have any other business and I'm resisting very hard from trying to do a joke really hard. Huh? Should I do it? Okay. All right. This in. Super Bowl had the highest TV viewer rating, said Taylor swiftly. Okay. I don't have a chair's report, but the items that should be placed on the consent agenda are items Roman numeral eight, A2, A, B, and C, and D. I did, I miss Kyle because he'd correct me on everything. Madam Chair, I yield back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Store. Up next, we have finance with Dr. Stephanie Fertato.
Budget Amendment, BUA 2023, 121283, Fund 1080, General Corporate, Department 031, Circuit Court, Increased Appropriations $40,000, Increased Revenue $0, Reason to Pay Final Invoices for Professional Services in Fiscal Year 2023. Do I have a motion, Mr. Farney? Second, Beth, very sure or not? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in, oh, Mr. Thorson.
I just wanted to say, I hope this is the last one. I wanted to say that there's 53 words in the memorandum. I counted them. This is a lot of money for 53 words. I wish we knew a little bit more detail whenever people come to us for 40K. So that's all I can say. And I don't think Liz would do it this way.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Next, I'm going to do these as an omnibus. Treasurer Resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase, permanent parcel 020010030, permanent parcel 140190057, permanent parcel 30058-0297, permanent parcel 300590019, permanent parcel 300600032, and permanent parcels 300530053. Do I have a motion, Ms. Michaels? Second, Mr. Smith? Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? One thing I noticed, the treasurer's monthly report is not linked on here. Can we do that? It is up on the board. I looked, the January report is up. So could we add that link back in? Oh, it wasn't in on Friday? Okay, gotcha. Okay. It is on now, so just so everybody, in case people are wondering. Approval of award of contracts to the review committee's recommendation for financial auditing services pursuant RFP 2023009. Do I have a motion, Mr. Esri? Second, Beth, very sure or not? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? County Executive Resolution obtaining certain taxes heretofore levied to pay the principal of and interest of various outstanding bonds of the county of Champaign, Illinois? Do I have a motion? Ms. Carter, Mr. Sexton, second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Subrecipient agreement between the county of Champaign and the Champaign County Health Department and the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District? Do I have a motion? Ms. Carter, first, Ms. Locke, second? Seeing none, all those in favor? Number D, I feel like maybe this is going to stop our perfect record. D, additional commitment for participation in the Minimum Revenue Guarantee Fund for the University of Illinois Willard Airport. And point of order, is this just for discussion or are we taking a vote tonight, Mr. Chairman? Discussion only. So discussion? Ms. Locke?
I just wanted to let everyone know. Yesterday, I attended through Experience Champaign-Urbana as our liaison to them. I attended an info session on what the county, or what the county's being asked to fund. Basically, we've all been here before. We know that we've contributed money to a commercial line for...
We know that we've contributed money to a commercial line for DC. The line's there, it's just DC is slot-controlled, and so we'd have to steal someone's spot. So that's there, but it's not there. We don't have service to DC until we, until someone else's service fails, basically, and then we can have it. But 80% of the people flying out of Willard are on recreation, and they're going somewhere else, and they want, they want to be able to connect people from here to somewhere else. We want to be able to bring other people here to make this an attractive place to be, and it's hard to even get here from anywhere. When you're coming to check out the neighborhoods, it's hard to find out where we are. So the university put up $500,000. They're seeking $500,000 more because 1 million is the bottom of the barrel of the revenue incentives that with the pilot shortage, you have to have the incentive to get the flights there. And the idea is that we'd bring in a low-cost carrier, and in bringing in the low-cost carrier, then we have two carriers at our airport, and that helps prevent a catastrophic loss of all service, like has happened in places like Williamsport where the Little League World Series is. You can't fly there now. You have to fly to Erie or somewhere else and then drive. I know money's tight for us, and I know that we're going to have, hopefully have Carly come and talk to us about this at a later meeting. There's a lot of good information about the economic impact that this can have on our community. No matter what little bit we put in, it would be helpful. The university's $500,000 would go first. As it's written, they're seeking another $500,000, but the university's money would be gone before any community matching funds are depleted. So that would be helpful. And they have a lot of good information. I hope they come and talk to us and ask us formally.
We're going to go, Mr. Summers, do you have a point of information?
Yes, I received some data very belatedly from Carly. It's a little bit of the economic development information that I was looking for. According to the consultant that they've retained, in 2019, Willard Airport brought in $3.6 million in local taxes, and our slice of it for the county was about $407,000. If we were to add one new route, the economic impact would be approximately $4.1 million, with $847,000 in new taxes generated overall in the county. So it, there's a lot more in terms of economic impact that'll be brought up much more eloquently by Carly when she's able to be here. And I just want the board to consider, again, this is the second meeting in a row where I'm talking about economic development. I mean, that's one way that we can try and minimize the degree to which we're going to the taxpayers asking for funds. So, thank you.
Then I had Ms. Michaels and then Mr. Thorzlin.
Real quick, do they have a timeline on when those funds are needed? And then my second part of that question is, is as we see that, this is probably a one-time ask, that could this not be part of those funds that are not spent from the ARPA that we may see back in '24, '25?
So, two things. I'm going to refer to that first part of your question. The second thing is this, is that we, I would prefer that it come from the general fund, being that it's such a small amount of money. But also, if you recall, that we have to have money allocated by this year for ARPA, and if for some reason they don't spend it, and we get it back, we'd have to give it back to the feds. And I don't want to be in that position even for $15,000. So that would be my one caution, is if for some reason they didn't expend it, that would mean we could never expend it. So for this amount of money, I'd prefer that it come from the general fund, just in case, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Thorzlin? Oh, but to your first question, my understanding is, I don't know much about the timing outside of it's okay if we don't decide to the next meeting. Beyond that, we might have to talk to, oh, Jen, Jen knows all things.
Only today. Never ever again after today. Their deadline is April 1st for what they're working on, but that's for pledges. There's, it's after a contract is signed with an airline, that's when the pledge has to be converted to cash. And then it's federally controlled that within two years, the money would be spent or returned. And the hope is that, since it's a revenue guarantee, the hope is that they wouldn't need the money at all. It would be profitable from day one, but, you know, who knows? Within two years after the contract date, so I don't think that would work with ARPA at all.
Mr. Thorzlin?
Yeah, I rode here, it was cold. My heart got a little colder, and I guess I'm just a curmudgeon tonight. I understand completely all the economic development numbers. I also understand that when I moved here in 1994, I think every other year on the news, whoever was the airport manager de jour was on asking for money to get more flights from Willard. I fly a lot. I know how to drive up 57 with my eyes closed, in the dark, jet-lagged, vomiting. I can do it in any way, shape, or form to Midway and O'Hare, because that's where I have to fly from all the time. Nothing flying out of Willard ever works for either my work or for my recreation flying right now. And it hasn't. I did a little quick look, and I know we talked about this flight to Dulles, IDA, and it's coming as soon as somebody drops out. I found three times in the past 12 years where they asked for money for that route. And it totals up to a lot of money. If we get this pleasure route, which is what we're looking at, I think, Jen, expert of all tonight, we're getting a pleasure route, maybe we'll get from Florida, which I know DIA wants desperately, because they want to get all those Florida families to fly up here, and so they can slather goods and services on their kids, so that they can make money with football and basketball, and not share it with the rest of us on campus. I told you, I'm a curmudgeon tonight. We could also just hire a cheaper coach. The, I can see the economic development of our people flying, and Brett brought this up, too. You know, we've got people flying to Vegas, we've got people flying to Florida. We're not going to lure people from Florida and Vegas to come vacation here in Champaign, unless we've got a sports event going on, or somehow land some big convention, which we don't really have the facilities for. So I'm all for it, mostly because I don't think we're actually going to spend this money that's going to come back to us, because they're not going to get a route. And if they do get a route, and they get Spirit, the airline where, you know, you can sit next to the hole, no way, that's Alaska, and your luggage has to ride outside. I mean, that's great and all, and it's good economic development, but really, we're going to spend money to lure Spirit Airlines here, when I'd love to get like a real airline that could take me to where I have to work, or when I go overseas. I'd love a connection to Dulles, because then I could fly to Geneva when I have to go work there, and not drive to Midway. And they need to have a competitive price. So I'm looking forward, Steve, to, if you could get them to come here and talk to us all about this next month, I really want to hear about it. I have lots and lots of questions, and I have a whole month to get ready to ask them. So, and I'm going to be lots of fun. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Jen, really, for filling us in, though. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Lockshin, and then Ms. Venishirnat.
I think just a point for consideration. I don't think the idea is to lure people here for recreation. I think it is to lure people here, to live here and contribute to our economy on an ongoing basis, because it's a more attractive place to live when we are able to, say, take a vacation to Disney without having to drive a couple hours first to get a flight, because I'm going to have screaming kids in the car for, you know, that's, I'm hopeful that that's, you know, one of the benefits that would come from having an additional route out of Willard, is that we're more connected and therefore a more enticing place for people to want to live.
Ms. Venishirnat, then, Jen?
Just a point of information. Illinois is leading 69 to 43, so the coach is doing his job.
If I could get a proper chair for a kid in my shop class, I'd be happy about that. I don't care what the coach is doing.
Ms. Straub? Seeing nobody else? Going once, going twice, ending that. Other business? Seeing, oh, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Thorzlin, just the whole thing, is Dulles money's been sitting around, sitting around how long now?
Oh, 2012 was the first time I found.
Microphone.
Sorry.
2012 was the first time I saw that they got some money, and I didn't do a whole lot of looking into this. I'm sure if I kept flipping pages on Google, I'd find back in the '90s when they were looking for flights to there. We did have a flight to Charlotte for a while, it went away because nobody got on it. So, we had a flight to Vegas, I think, at some point, but
Yeah, this is, this is just a one-point destination. I believe it said it's going to Florida, Arizona, or Las Vegas. It has just like one place that's all we're going to and coming back from. So I don't really see like, you know, people are going to move here, just then go to one extra place possibly in our air flight. And like you had said, too, it's, people are going to go there and then come back. They're not going to come from there to here and then go back, really. At least I can't see it. And I don't know of any hubs in Arizona. I'm sure Vegas has one. I'm sure, what? Phoenix, yeah, okay, well, we may go to Phoenix then. Yeah, I just don't see a lot of people coming through there as much as they were some of the larger ones. And honestly, I'll just say this again, I'd really rather spend the money on our people and programs here, rather than something like this, that we might get the money back two years from now or so. I'd like to use it now. That's all.
Ms., did you have other business, or are you on this?
Other business.
Ms. Taylor, are you on this, or?
I was going to add in on this.
Okay.
I will say that there are actually people who are moving here from Florida. My husband works now for a company in Seattle. They also have a large office in Florida. And once all the people there realized how cheap housing is here, as compared to basically anywhere in Florida, that's not just a swamp that has not been deswamped yet, they have actually started moving here, and they still have their parents and their siblings in Florida. So as far as that goes, yeah, I could, there is definitely going to be some travel as far as that, you know, heading back there for the holidays and stuff like that. But I am excited to see that sort of thing happening.
Done talking about the airport.
We're done talking about the airport. All right, Ms. Michaels?
Yeah, I have another note. Oh, there you go. Little red light, come on. With, having to do with finance and folding out the end of '23, I know we see a lot of budget amendments. There will be none for highway. They are done, they've got them all in, and they've all already been settled. And that doesn't happen very often with that department or other departments, because there's always things hanging out from projects that have been done. So, big kudos to highway and the people there. And Ms. Carter, who chairs that?
That's awesome. All right. So the items that I have, I don't have a chair's report. Items to be put on the consent agenda are Finance A1, B1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, C2, and D1 and 2. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Fertato. So we have any other business? Well, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.